Good.
Would you rather a most, can we get a regular most without the most?
Yeah.
All right. Good afternoon, everybody. The time is 4:01 PM. We will now call to order the regular monthly meeting of the Elderly and Disabled Tax Fund Committee. Today is Thursday, August 1st, and this is a hybrid meeting, which is in person and accessible via Zoom. Meeting ID 84799535156, passcode 088581. Would you please join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi. Excuse me.
All right. Did everybody get a chance to review the minutes from the previous meeting? All right, excellent. Did anybody have any corrections or is there a motion to accept them as read?
I had nothing.
I wasn't at the meeting, so technically I can't vote on them.
Oh, true, okay.
So.
Did you want to make a motion?
I did read them, but I can't vote on them.
I make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes from July, June 6th, sorry, 2024.
Is there a second?
I second that.
All right, made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing done. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No one has answered. We go with one participant, that's us.
Yep, I have to abstain.
With Jonathan abstaining.
Oh, yes.
All right, so just to jump into our old business, and I apologize, the building also was double booked. I did not anticipate that when I booked, but I should have checked the calendar.
Don't worry.
No problem.
So just to jump into the old business, I think some of our old business is going to self-dissolve as we get to our new business, because Jonathan was kind enough to spearhead a sample application for us. So first item for old business was to review, discuss ACT, the eligibility guidelines, application window, minimum, maximum, award amounts. I believe a lot of that is addressed in the application that he developed.
In the application window, we actually voted on last meeting, so that is actually taken care of.
Yes.
We had, I mean, obviously, we can change here, but we did discuss that and make a motion on that.
We also discussed identifying ways to promote awareness, which included the strawberry vine, chin line, social media, and I think that...
The plaque for you, your office.
Yes, yep, exactly. I'm going to be ordering that this month.
Awesome.
Yep, and...
Is that something that we would pay for out of these funds, or would that be something that gets paid out of the treasurers and/or process those funds?
I think it would be appropriate to pay it out of my departmental budget for my service counter one. This is a statutory appointment, so this is one that I'm a required member by law. So I think it's a totally appropriate use of town funds. And I can get input from the interim town administrator if there's any question about it, but I don't see any reason that I would do it.
And it's probably same for the assessors too then, right, out of their budget, because they are required to be a member?
Yes, exactly.
Awesome, okay. So then that makes sense.
Okay.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
How are you?
Afternoon.
So we're just reviewing the old business, and we're discussing identifying ways to promote awareness of the Senior and Disabled Tax Fund. So I was just saying that I'm going to order a, I'm going to look at ordering a sign or a placard to keep the service counter, just to notify people that it exists. That way I might recharge donations at the counter for people that received the mailer but forgot, or that sort of thing. We're just discussing whether that could be purchased out of the departmental budget. I don't see any reason why it can't. My office is required and required to be a member, so I see it as totally in line with my duties to use departmental budget for that. What I can do is after I price out a couple, I can send it to you to see if you'd like one for the assessor's counter, and then maybe that's something the assessors could look into keeping there.
Does that make sense?
Kind of like an office apply line line?
Yeah.
Would that make sense, because people generally aren't paying their bills?
They'd be applying for exemptions there, though.
Oh, I see.
Nothing else, they see it and they can pass the information on to somebody else perhaps, too.
We also had just a review and discuss about the request to modify the insert. I apologize, I should have put a copy of what we sent out in the insert, but we just updated it with some sample, some basic language to put the application window and to please see the assessors between January 2nd and April 1st.
Yes.
And... So the selectmen obviously did approve that. I think as we go, I'd like to modify that again as we get closer to the actual billing.
Right.
Just because I think that it's going to evolve and will...
Hopefully, we'll have a link to...
Right, the more that we know, exactly. And just kind of make it a little more aesthetic and a little more informational. But to move on to the new business, to review, discuss ACT, develop a rough draft of application. Jonathan was kind enough to spearhead back and brought us a...
I think I gave you two things, the application and the guidelines?
Yes, and the eligibility guidelines. Yep, I've got both of those in here.
These were taken from, what I did is I looked at a couple of different towns, Hingham being one, but I forget the other two towns off the top of my head right this minute, and did a compilation of what I thought was the easiest and simplest for all three, kind of combined it, and then obviously put Dayton's information in there. So feel free to chop it up, Kelly.
Do remember, excuse me, last time we were talking about seeing what the assessors has for an application so that we could hopefully, I remember Bill saying, like essentially, this whole page is the same.
Because that's what I was just about to say.
So do you have that with you?
No, actually, you said you were going to get that, remember?
I apologize, I forgot to get that.
But I can tell you that all of this stuff is on there.
Okay.
And more so.
Are you just talking about the first page?
More so. You know, the application that we have is going to be, I don't know, like three, four pages or something like that. And it's got literally everything. Well, there is one page I can remember that it's very clearly, like very tightly spaced, and it's got all of these, like gross income, you know, getting some spousal support, child support, and here's your expenses, your heating and your electric, everything is...
Okay, perfect. So what I think we could do is just kind of verbally walk through the form as it exists now. We can get feedback on what is or isn't on the exemption paperwork from this, and then...
That way we know what's necessary on ours versus what would be a repeat on theirs.
Right, because I think now, does the exemption, since this is a disabled veteran's exemption, I'm assuming there's like a veteran's designation on all of them, or is it just on the disabled veterans' application? Because we were talking about a veteran's preference.
Okay, so looking at... So this is elderly and disabled. This is for financial hardship. We have a separate veteran exemption, that is just because you're a veteran.
Right.
So they're two completely different applications, I assume?
Completely different things.
Okay, so then we would probably want to make sure ours definitely has it.
Right, because we just want to give a local veteran's preference.
Right.
Though there are people who are applying for exemptions.
16 older or anybody disabled who could be a veteran.
Right, because there might be people with financial hardship who are applying, who are veterans but don't have a service-connected disability.
Exactly, and we're still going to look at the income.
Right. Okay.
So are you suggesting a person should be able to, for lack of a better phrase, double dip? In that they could get a veteran exemption, which would knock $1,000 off of their tax bill, and then they can come to us and get more?
Well, just the veterans, I think the difference is, if the veteran's exemption is granted simply because they're a veteran, then I don't think we can, either way, they can't double dip, in my opinion.
Right.
If they're getting the other exemption because there's a veteran period, and they're allowed to have that, I hate to use the word entitled, but if they're allowed to have that, then I think that that's the way it should be. On the other hand, if they're a veteran who qualifies for this but may not qualify for the other exemption, I don't know the regs on that.
Why would they not? So I think I could ask you, if you don't mind, like, there's a blind exemption, which I believe is similar.
Correct.
You don't need any income requirements, correct?
For the blindness exemption, you do not need an income requirement. No, I get that automatically.
Yeah, I believe it's a standard for veteran.
Yeah, so therefore, if I were to apply for this as well, I shouldn't be able to double dip?
That's my point.
Yeah.
So I think the reason we were saying to have it on our application is because they... So I'm sorry, let me backtrack. If they're a veteran, they automatically get an exemption?
I can double check.
Okay. Because I remember when we were helping somebody, I feel like it had to be, they had to have a related injury...
To the service?
In service to get an exemption.
I think it's got to be a disability pension, and I don't think it matters whether it's 10% or 12%.
I don't think it's just because you're a veteran, you get an exemption. I don't remember that being the case, but I might not have seen, if that's a whole separate thing, maybe that was only at the veterans' office, and we don't, we didn't get that one, maybe. But if that is the case, then we maybe would strike it. If they automatically would get one, they can just go get the one that's potentially for more. Or may, I don't know, I feel like it would just make me feel better to keep it, just in case, because we wanted to give preference to that.
Right, I...
It would, yeah.
I concur.
If I make a certificate or letter of United States defining veterans fair, or the branch, blah, blah, it just says armed discharge, that's it. Status is veteran. It's literally right underneath.
Is there an age limitation to that?
No.
So any veteran would automatically receive X amount of dollars for an exemption?
That's what I see here.
Okay.
Veteran exemption, so it reads certain, okay. They have to be domiciled, not dissonably discharged, and they can get from $400 to full tax, but I believe 1,000 is what our standard is. It may even apply to surviving spouses.
You know, if somebody is a veteran, gets the exemption, but still has financial need and otherwise meets the income requirements, are we opposed to, you know, double dipping?
Yes, because of the limited funds available. Not, nothing against veterans. I love veterans. And, but the thing is, is that we want to be able to, this is the purpose of this, to catch people who are falling through the cracks.
So I kind of see almost in, depending, because obviously every year will be different. I think that having that blanket statement that we've talked about the last few meetings, say, we do have a year where we have a lot of funds, and we are able to help people in more cases. I wouldn't want to necessarily automatically deny a veteran just because they already received an exemption. It wouldn't, I just feel like they would maybe, if they already got an exemption, they wouldn't be the first priority because they received something already. I don't know if I would automatically exclude them from receiving an additional one if they need it.
I agree, I feel like, no, please.
I was going to say, but I'm going to say this, and I, in many ways, I agree with Bill, because if, for example, I'm going to use the blindness exemption. If the blindness exemption is gotten, and then the person also, if the only income they have is social security disability income, for example, yes, they have a very low income, but they've already gotten one exemption, and I think we go down a slippery slope.
I don't think we would necessarily automatically give people a double dip. They would, I don't know if it's fair to immediately deny them. If, say, we only get one person who applies that hasn't received anything, and all the other applicants have received both, then I would feel, I don't know, I, it really depends on what we have for funds every year.
We also have applicants who might qualify for circuit breaker. And if they're getting circuit breaker, should they also be able to get this exemption?
What do you mean circuit breaker? Circuit breaker is a mass income tax concept.
But it's a reduction of property tax.
It is?
So if they qualify for circuit breaker?
I think you're talking about the elderly.
I am.
We do not, that's not the, how do I put it? That is not the law, the Massachusetts law that we follow right now. We do not follow the circuit breaker. We did just raise the limits. I'm trying to, I don't remember the exact clause. I'd have to look it up. I think let's say it's 14C and a half or something like that is circuit breaker, and we use 14C or something along those lines. But the circuit breaker was, when I was advocating it, that was the point at which I said I don't recommend going there, because by putting in the circuit breaker credit, you'd literally be giving a break to almost all senior citizens instead of just those in need. The circuit breaker credit is quite high, high, well, I don't know how you would look at it, but it's something like, I don't know, $60,000, $70,000 a year or something like that.
Yeah, it's a higher threshold.
It's a much higher threshold.
I just, I don't know, I feel uncomfortable giving people an opportunity to double dip, even though I know that they're going to need it. I don't know if we're getting it to...
So we've already said, I think at the outset, we said that if you go to the assessor's office and you get an exemption, that's pretty much disqualified for going to us. We already said that, I believe.
We have discussed that, yeah.
So I think that's the point, anybody that gets any exemption, and I'm simply suggesting, what may happen is, I did see there that said $400 to, so I'm not quite sure what the, you can fall into different veteran categories, there's like five or six looks like categories there, and possibly, like you were saying, could be disabled or something like that. So maybe if they only qualify for 400, you know, we could add Phil 600 or something like that. I could see that being reasonable. But again, as we discussed before, I think all of this should be not codified, but just sort of...
Right, with that blanket sentence?
That we can discuss it and, you know, make exceptions on case by case.
Right, so we may have years where we get a lot of donations and very few applications, or...
So my only fear is, though, if they do receive another exemption, and that would, if we say that automatically exempt you from going for this, then we wouldn't be able to make those case-by-case situations for, say, somebody who, if they only got the 400 veteran and they need a little bit more, we wouldn't even have their information, because we would have already told them, we already got one. So how do we, like, is there a way that we can just set on a form saying, yes, I already received an exemption, so that even if they apply for one, they can apply for ours, too? They do both at the same time? And then we find out, oh, they did receive X amount, so put them to the bottom of the list, kind of thing, and then focus on the people who haven't received any that do definitely qualify?
So I believe that what we were thinking of is that as part of the application to the assessors, we would say, you know, would you also like to be considered for this, this elderly fund?
Right.
And then a decision would be made as to whether it would transfer from the assessor's office to us.
Right, to give us, give permission.
And I would say certainly on a year-to-year basis, you know, we could let Stephanie know or whoever's in the assessor's office, you know, these are our, this is our general guidelines for this year. And so if anybody get the full $1,000, we might say, anybody that got any exemptions, you know, don't send them to us. Or we could say, you know, if anybody got $1,000, maybe you say no. Or maybe somebody got $400, well, we'll let those through, you know? So what we can do is sort of like define that boundary from the assessor's office to us to filter out, because we don't want to look at everybody.
Right.
And I think we, didn't we cap this at $300, too? We talked about that.
And then last meeting, we discussed that a little differently, because depending on what we get for funds, we weren't sure. We wanted to cap fully at 300, because, say, we get a year where we have $10,000 in our fund and we only have a few applicants, then we could dish out a little bit more money than we would have.
I believe what we had discussed at the last meeting, I don't think you were there, Jonathan, it was...
Yeah, no, I wasn't.
We said we would sort of look at how much funds we had available, and then look at how many people we approved, and then see what an appropriate amount would be.
Yeah, like kind of creating like almost a calculation, and only using the funds we received from the fiscal year prior. So like, we'd have our own cap, because obviously, well, I shouldn't say obviously, hopefully, money keeps continuously coming in, but only using what was collected in that year prior to use towards whoever applied in that next fiscal year, and seeing kind of where the money lies there.
So am I correct in that if the money isn't used in any given year, it can roll over to the next year?
Yes, of course.
Yes.
So I'm wondering if it still makes sense, at least initially, because we're going to, you know, this is a standing committee now.
Right.
So I'm wondering if it still makes sense to cap, to cap the first year at $300. If we get significant, you know, a number of people saying they want to contribute to the fund through their taxes or otherwise, and it went to 4,000 next year, 6,000 next year, at that point, we can decide where we're going to raise it to 400 or 500. But I still think capping it at 300 avoids the potential possibility of giving Jonathan 300 and giving Paul 600, and somebody coming to us and saying, well, why did you give him more money? They're both in need. That's not fair.
Right, that's where the calculation came in.
And that's why I think it does make sense to at least hold the line at a certain maximum figure, knowing that if more donations come in and more people contribute to this fund, the ability is there to increase it next year.
That's true.
My first comment is that, well, because it's Paul. Second of all, but you know what I'm saying? I don't want to codify, I agree with you fundamentally, but I don't want to codify these things. I want to be like, yeah, sure, we're sitting around this table, or even, you know, people on YouTube would understand this is our general policy for this year, but I don't want to like write it down in stone so that, you know, it has to be like, you know, motioned and changed and whatever for the future. I think that certainly $300 is a fine number for the first year as a cap, but we, I think that's...
Right, because we only have three, right, from previous? If we're going to stick to that, if we do put that in that we want to use last, or I guess it would be from, what, 2014 to now? Was that when it started?
I believe so, yeah.
So I guess we would just kind of lump all of that as like last fiscal years?
Yeah.
Just that we don't want to obviously give out more than 3,000 so we can collect more for the following year.
I just, I do like it codified, you know, look, somebody can make a motion a year from now that we change the figure from two to four, and you're changing the codified figure from three to four. I just like it codified, because I don't want any resident to put us in the position of coming back and saying, why did you? Why, this isn't fair. And I think if we don't codify it, it, I hate to use this term, if you do the smell test, and somebody gets something that somebody else doesn't think they should have gotten, or somebody says, well, they should have gotten it to him and not her, but he's, but he knows more people, so I think we have to codify it.
We could maybe thread the needle and do a bit of both, like just as an example with the exemptions. Rather than say, if you've received an exemption, you're disqualified from any distributions, we could say some of the affected qualified applicants who have not received an exemption will receive preference.
Right, like kind of like veteran preference and that.
If there is one, and then similarly, we could say that awards will be made on the basis of the number of applicants and funds availability, but will generally be awarded in increments of 100, 200, or $300.
That keeps it pretty long to go.
I think that that's a fair way to do it.
That way, if we did one year, we have a year where we have plenty of money, and we only have one or two applicants, and we can afford to do four or five or $100.
Right.
It preserves our ability to do that, but it also will prevent from somebody feeling like they've been discriminated against, because we've established that there is generally a ceiling on this that is a fairly conservative number.
Excuse me.
So I apologize once again for not getting a copy of the exemption application. That, I think, will probably guide some of the specifics of this a little more. I do like the, I'm assuming, Bill, that the application has a lot of the same stuff like fuel assistance, SNAP, things like that on there.
I would say that pretty much everything, like, should be on there.
So how would it, how would you guys feel if, say, we did maybe like a one-page piece of paper, instead of a whole packet, because they're doing the packet already, that asks for those specific things, or has the preference information, like if they've received an exemption previous, or have they applied? For one, have you replied in the year prior? I know we talked about that, to try to give preference to those who have never received it before. In the last, I think we talked about, couple of years or so, to kind of make it almost like a yes or no type of form, because all of this type of stuff would already be filled out through their application.
Right.
And maybe on ours has the, I allow permission for the board of assessors to share my financial or whatever information from my exemption application to our board, and have it just literally be a one-page paper with you guys.
So my belief is it should be not even a page, just like you just said. There should be a box on the assessor's application that just says, I wish to be considered for this fund, and I give assessor's office permission to share. And then we don't actually need, I'm trying to keep the paperwork to a minimum, bureaucracy to a minimum. If the assessor's office literally has everything that we need, there's no need to have an additional form, an additional application, et cetera. Just give them permission to send it to us for consideration after the board of assessors has considered it.
Right.
And like myself, I would already, I will have already reviewed it as an assessor, and I can bring that information to this board, and then we can just pull out the file and say, okay, can this person qualify for this?
Right, my point was, anything that's not on it would be that form.
If there is anything that we should find, and I honestly can't think of anything, but if there is something that we find that is some information that we need that the assessor's office never asked for, absolutely, I completely agree.
And we would still need, I, in my opinion, we definitely would still need a guidelines form that they need to have access to, to understand what we even are. Just checking off a box, they don't understand what the hell we are, what we do, what we offer.
Yeah.
I think anybody who checks that box off should also receive this in return, just so they know what they're actually checking off and signing up for.
I agree.
Should we just go over the guidelines then? Because we can't, while we wait till maybe next meeting to look over the other one, to see what the assessors has?
All right, so, okay, so I can tell you issue I have on the very first line. I think we literally just lowered the age from 70 to 65, did we not?
For yours, but we talked about seniors mirroring Council on Aging, which is 60 and older.
Okay, so what I'm saying is that...
That was our first meeting.
So if there is...
Our second.
A group of people that would automatically fall through the assessors, because...
Right, you guys are 65. So I think it, I mean, we discussed it last time, I still stand by 60 being fair, because that's what we qualify as a senior in the town of Dayton, from the Council on Aging side. And that would catch the people who can't get an exemption, that five years, who, we all know people struggle. They automatically don't qualify for yours, but they would for ours.
So now I guess a question, because I agree. Question that I would have would be, Bill, if you had somebody who is below 65, would you even allow them to submit an application?
Once, once, put this in place, yes.
Okay, so they would just submit, they'd be like summarily denied for the exemption, but then we would have the same certification, all the documentation just fly over.
So there's one process, that was the whole point. And I did talk to Stephanie and the rest of the assessors about this issue, and I said that it would be cases where we'd have to take extra, you know, applications that we would automatically deny, and they were okay with that.
Awesome.
Okay, that sounds great. Now, not to be that guy, but do we need a legal opinion on the language for the certification or the authorization to share information between the assessors?
I think that once we are complete with our, how we want to design it, absolutely, we need to have particularly the waiver of...
Right, that's...
Information.
Information, because the last thing ever that I get involved with is somebody suing the town because the assessors office gave financial information.
Right.
Yeah, definitely, it gets a little dicey when it's this personal of information.
Right.
I don't think it would hurt either way, definitely.
I think the answer will be fine, I'm sure, you know, they'll come back and say, yeah, this is fair.
As long as it's worded appropriately, and they, at least when we worked with them, they were so helpful with helping us design liability forms and wording it. I mean, that's not my field, so they did a great job helping us with that, so I think it would be a good idea.
And now...
Should we just go bullet by bullet?
Sure. So disabled is defined for the purposes of this application as a person who is not able to work. Supporting documentation will be necessary to prove this status. That's something that they would also be providing to the assessors.
Isn't there a gray area? Like, somebody can be partially disabled?
Did you have that form, Jonathan? I remember you mentioning a few meetings ago that there's a standard form that's filled out with a physician.
Yeah, there's a standard, and I should have put that in this packet, and I did.
That's okay. Is that something that you submit when you apply for yours?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I'm just going to write Jonathan has...
Yeah, and I'll have that for next, and it's really, it's just, it's a physician's form that the PCP or whatever it is fills out that says this is to certify that.
Okay.
For example, Jonathan Gale has a disability which is defined as, and it names the disability, and then it will say there's, there are four things like, has any physical limitation? Yes, no. You know, the, I mean, without giving...
Physical limitation, but this says unable to work.
There's a few different things that are checked off on it, but what it does is it gives the disability, you know, and if there's, we don't need all the information it provides.
So it's like more than what we would need, you're saying?
It's more than what we need, because it's defined...
Yeah, if you can bring that, I think that'd be helpful.
It's defined really for social security purposes.
And I assume anyone, if you have to fill that out, I would assume anyone who does the disability, or is it just the blindness disability that Jonathan has?
No, it's anyone.
But does Dayton allow, is, how... But does Dayton allow, is, how many, I haven't seen it. Is there more in Dayton for disabilities, or is it just the blindness disability that Dayton offers?
Dayton just offers blindness.
Okay.
Right, this Commonwealth, because the Commonwealth offers it, it's not just Dayton.
Okay.
It's, it's a statutory offering through the Commonwealth.
Got it, okay.
I, whether I'm here in Newton, it doesn't matter, I can still put in for the blindness exception.
Okay, I understand. And then that is part of your application, you have to have that form?
Yes.
So they would receive that, too?
So, for example, when I, there are differences. Now, here's a difference, when I, for example, apply for my blindness exemption to the town of Dayton every year, I have to give them a copy of my certification of blindness.
Yep.
From the Mass Commission for the Blind.
Got it.
So I, if I, if I just have a doctor's letter, that's not acceptable.
Right.
But if I give them a certificate of blindness, that's, that's what, that's the codifies it.
Got it. So I guess in this case, this is another example of applications you would have never received because if Dayton only has the blindness exemption for disability, obviously, we know there's more disabilities than those are more applications as well, that you guys would never have.
Correct, and that's not based on age.
Right, correct, that's literally.
I was taking exception to disabled as being not able to work. So, for example, you know, I may use you as an example, you know, you have a disability, but yet you can work. So I, I believe that somebody may have a partial disability that limits their ability to work. You know, maybe they can't do a high-paying job, maybe they can only do a low-paying.
Well, you can have a disability and still work forty hours a week, but just not do heavy lifting, for example.
But this, yeah, he's saying this sentence says it's defined as somebody who is not able to work.
I'm not.
So maybe we need to change this definition.
Yeah.
Because I, I'm, I personally wouldn't feel fair to.
Who has a limited ability to work, maybe is a better way to put it. And I think a doctor's note would probably be sufficient.
Yeah, I was gonna say, where it says supporting documentation will be necessary to provide this, is that something that we should keep standard? Say you have your form, that's part of, that would be something additional for your application, too?
But I would put supporting medical documentation, the term medical in there.
Good point.
Otherwise, you can have your sister write a letter. Somebody will say, well, you just said supporting.
And then when.
This dude can't do a thing.
Yeah.
Let's see, where was the other part? Oh, limited, where am I putting that? Not able, no, limited.
Limited ability to work.
Oops, it would help if I could spell. Cool.
And I have a question on the income guidelines.
Both you.
Thank you. Can we not skip ahead?
Oh, sorry.
Okay, so we good with that, second bullet?
Third. Applicant must be the title owner of the property or holding life estate in the property. These conditions apply to elderly or disabled applicants.
I don't understand the last sentence, but the rest of it makes sense, it's exactly how we deal with it.
My mistake refers to the trust, you're to trust.
Oh, I think he's referring to the last sentence.
Conditions apply to elderly or disabled.
I mean, everybody's elderly or disabled, that's why they're.
Yeah, so.
So we can probably strike.
We could probably strike that one. Applicant must have lived in Dayton and held title of the tax property for two or more years at the time of application.
Oh, that's right.
I like that one.
Also, we talked about that, so that's why I did that.
That's the same guideline?
I believe so, yeah.
Awesome.
Income shall include all income such as.
It would be five, it would be five years for us.
Income shall include all income such as pensions, interest from savings accounts, IRAs, stocks or bonds, et cetera. Total income limit, sixty percent of the area median income, see table below. Assets such include stocks, bonds, CDs, IRAs, annuities, and any tangible liquid asset will be considered in determining eligibility in aid amount.
Yeah, this table, by the way, is from the Department of Labor, for specifically for this region.
Oh, gotcha, okay, thank you. The extraordinary circumstances.
Hold on, can you explain? I'm sorry, I'm still trying to understand this. What, what does total income limits mean?
Total income what?
Total income limits, what does that mean? Does that mean that?
Total household, the total household.
So if a person makes over that amount?
Yes.
They're automatically disqualified?
Correct, because total income limit is taking into account all forms of income.
I'm gonna put in household, I'm putting in front of that, total household, household income limits. I don't, I don't want to skip ahead, never mind.
So, so.
I'll wait.
This, this here would be similar to what we have, the assessor's office has in terms of, you know, we place limits upon, you know, you can't make X or you can't have Y. And if you are, you, you're disqualified. I thought the entire purpose of this committee was to try to catch some of those people that maybe they were just over the limit, whether they own a little bit more assets than is required. Have you compared what sixty percent area median income is to our current limits?
I don't know what our current limits are, so.
There is a, we do have a table, I don't know off the top of my head. They're pretty low, I know that.
I want to see that, and I can do the comparison, but.
I'm gonna put a star next to that bullet point to look further into.
Well, let's put this way, I don't think, you know, even if a household size of one, if this chart is correct, this is a correct chart from twenty-four?
Yep, yes it is.
So you're saying fifty-four thousand, I don't think we have any limits that high. I think the limits are like forty, fifty, or something like that. But Stephanie is a good person, she's, has she provided you with a new updated chart? Remember that chart with all the?
I have not received this, this year's yet. I think last year she did send it to me around the end of July, so I'll reach out to her and see.
Do you have that handy, for chance?
Have last year's?
Yeah, do you have that chart handy?
I don't have last year's right now.
Okay.
How would we feel about making the requirements a little more fluid?
The qualifications?
Yeah, of like, the funds will be distributed based on demonstrated applicant need and funds availability, rather than set a specific income limit. Because that would give us the ability to kind of color outside the lines of what the assessors do a little bit.
Better to me.
And then we can add in that blanket agreement, not agreement, blanket sentence with that bullet point, too. To, that we would, I forget how it was worded. I think it was in the last one.
Yeah, would we be, would we be better off not necessarily capping the limit?
Spelling it out.
And just saying that it'll be on the basis of availability and demonstrated need?
I prefer that.
Oh, and then we do have, I mean, if we do put the table, I know some of the other towns did, we could still keep the sentence of the committee shall have the discretion to waive the aforementioned criteria due to unforeseen, unforeseen circumstances. And we could maybe even tweak that, too. So if we did have to put, I don't know what's really required, or if every town is able to kind of play with their own.
And unforeseen circumstances, you could put in parentheses, example, unusual medical expense.
Right, so I do think, I didn't see that type of sentence on this, I do think that should be on there, because I think.
Look, it says EG and unusual expense, so you could just put the word medical in there.
Yeah, unusual expense such as medical expenses, something to that effect.
Oh my gosh, I didn't even, I'm sorry, I missed that bullet point.
You were skipping.
I totally skipped it.
So extraordinary circumstances, EG and unusual expense will be considered in the committee's deliberations in the decision process. This will provide the committee with flexibility to address unforeseen situations on a case-by-case basis.
Yeah, that's the exact bullet I was looking for, and didn't even see it.
I thought.
I'm not even kidding.
You were reading yet, I was.
I totally, I somehow loved it with the one above it, I don't know. It's been a day.
It's been a day.
Wow, it was literally right there.
Are we ready to move into the application process?
Yeah.
So, just, I apologize once again.
We got a hard stop at five. Are we going to do what you said and make it more loose?
Yeah, I would honestly.
Who's, I guess who's gonna revise this? Who owns this document?
I did, this is a document I did.
Okay.
But I can go in and do the revision, somebody can send me the notes.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, Laura, would you be willing to send John from the notes?
Absolutely.
Awesome.
No, just go ahead and make your revisions.
So how would we feel about, rather than this fifth bullet point, the income shall include all income? I, I like, I like that line, but with the total income limits? How would we feel about basically striking that? And just replacing it with something generic that awards will be made on the basis of funds availability and demonstrated applicant need?
It's a better blanketed statement.
And are we ready to move into application process?
Yes.
As we have tax aid grants will be awarded annually. FY twenty-five applicant, applications are due by April first, twenty twenty-five. Download and print the taxation aid application form, or copies are available in the assessor's office at phone number. All calls will be kept confidential. Your twenty twenty-four federal income tax submission must accompany this application. If you are required to file, if you are not required to file, you must sign the attestation at the bottom of the application.
I'm gonna add, I'm gonna suggest one thing there, your twenty twenty-four tax form. I would, I would, I would say ten forty, I would change it to tax form, I would say ten forty or Form Two. Because Form Two is the trust return.
Form Two being Massachusetts?
Massachusetts, right, or Massachusetts.
Wait, what, for which one? I'm sorry, for the twenty twenty-four federal income tax mission? And you said or what?
Or Massachusetts, and/or Massachusetts Form Two Trust Return. Because there may be, the home may be in a trust. So that's why I would put and/or. Because the resident may have a ten forty, but the ten forty may not even list the house if it's in a trust.
Oh, okay, that makes sense.
No, I'm confused, because ten forties, you don't, I mean, you might put mortgage interest.
But there may not be mortgage interest.
Right, but you don't put housing, real estate on a ten forty.
You do if you're, you do if you're eligible for the, if dependent upon your income. You might, you might qualify with enough, excuse me, enough exemptions, then you can also get the real estate deduction. It depends on what your total income is versus.
Help, help me out here, Paul, I'm unaware of what he's talking about. Do you have any idea what he's talking about?
I'm not.
So if you're itemizing.
Yeah.
Okay, if you're doing a simple return, you're right. But if a person is found and itemized the term.
Right.
Then dependent upon what their total income is, is, and, and what their exemptions are, are going to determine whether or not they're eligible to itemize. And if they're eligible to itemize, then they're going to be able to take property tax, for example.
He's unlocked.
No, I, I think they're just. It's like COD is here, they're just wondering why we're set up my bad.
So I think that's why, and in some cases, you know, the person can have a ten forty and just have, you know, some wage income, and maybe some social security income or something. But if the home is not listed there, it's listed as the address where they live. But if, if the home is now in the trust, in the name of the trust, it's not even going to be listed there. So we would want to have the Form Two to show the trust, because there may be other things in the trust that are other assets as well.
So.
Is that something, if somebody has a life estate or a trust, is the documentation that would be provided to the assessors?
Yes.
Okay, so, so would we be okay with just kind of?
That's what I'm saying, so, so the incomes, I guess the question is, this bullet, what is the goal? I assume that the goal was supposed to be to verify how much income they have. And if you want to verify how much income they have, the twenty twenty-four federal income tax is perfectly sufficient.
But, but it's not.
I think Jonathan is saying that if somebody has a home in a trust, and they have a beneficial interest in a trust, that they're providing something to substantiate the fact that they have a beneficial interest in it.
And it's also, it's also not necessarily, the, the ten forty is not sufficient because if the person's income is low enough, for example, then they don't have to report social security receipt, that they're receiving social security on their ten forty, because it's not going to count.
But if somebody is applying for an exemption, they'd have to provide documentation to demonstrate that they have an interest in the trust. So maybe rather than know this in particular, if we were to replace this language or something to the effect that just notifying people that the documentation that's provided to the Board of Assessors.
Will be forward.
Right, may, maybe that would be a better catch-all, because that will catch not only the housing documentation, but also the income.
It'll just be the income, the everything.
These packets, you need to understand, when we are reviewing them, they are often an inch thick, you know, with a hundred pages. And it's all stuff like income tax forms, electric bills, trust, copy of the trust, you know, showing that. And we have denied people because they're not actually the owner of the house.
So are we?
If I may finish, let me, let me, I want to finish on that point. We had one recently where the person applied and he didn't realize that he had put, they put the house in a trust, and the beneficiary of the trust was the children, and the, the executive, no, not executor, it's not, we're a trustee. Trustee, thank you, was not him. So it turned out he has no beneficial interest in the house, so therefore we deny him. So, and that's the point, we see the actual trust document, they have to give that as part of the application.
Gotcha, so we might accept, if, if, so then the question is, if, if somebody is applying to us for assistance, we're back to the, to square one, are we gonna say, you know, you have to go through the assessor's office first? You have to fill out everything in the assessor's office to see what else you qualify? Suppose they're sixty years old?
Right, that was what we were saying.
Forty-eight years old.
Right, they were still gonna apply through them.
We're still gonna have them go to the assessor's office automatically.
Because the assessor's office already does this, they have all the tools in place, they have all the mechanisms, and then they can put together a packet and then give it to us.
No, I think that's great, I just want to.
His board, he did say his board agreed that they're aware that they'll be accepting more applications in that.
And I caught that, I, I think, I just want to be clear.
Yeah, because there'll definitely be more, because it'll be the sixty to sixty-five, and then any disability.
Exactly.
That could be ours versus if they only do the blindness, obviously, there's a lot more.
And, and just to keep expectations, you know, I've always been surprised, I think this year, I think we had like thirty.
Right, and this is like gonna take a long time to really.
We're not talking hundreds of thousands, you know, you might get ten people who are.
Right. And this is obviously a newer thing that people don't know about, so it'll take time to get the word. Out and about, so, kind of regroup on that, that bullet point, we're kind of striking and just essentially saying the part about how you'll apply through the assessor's department and authorizing the, whatever that sentence is gonna be, how we word the sharing of information to replace that, because to not get specific about it, because they're gonna take what they need anyway.
You just make, when you send it to me, just make a note there and I'll.
Yeah, I'm making notes right now about it all.
And I'll word it, or you can word it.
We'll just kind of make a blanket wording until we get legal opinion on how to phrase it correctly, because I know I'm not gonna phrase that correctly.
Then, just, we've got about ten minutes left, so just move on through. So all information supplied to the committee will be held in the strictest confidence. Please return completed and signed application to Town of Dayton Assessor's Office. That may end up changing form a little bit as we, as we have people start with the exemption and then provide things, so.
It should say something to the effect of, you know, contact Dayton Assessor's Office to start the process.
Yeah, right, something to that effect. Distribution of funds, assistance will be granted on a rolling basis based on need as determined by the taxation aid committee. Since the funds are typically replenished annually through voluntary contributions, the availability of funds will vary from year to year. I love that line, the town can I guarantee, any disbursements in a given year, the maximum aid amount will not exceed three hundred dollars.
Is that where we should add something about, or do you think the extraordinary circumstances covers it on the first part, on the qualifications?
I think it's covered.
Okay.
And I don't think we should change it. I mean, again, this can be reviewed every year, and that can go from three to three fifty, or five hundred, or whatever.
Yep.
The taxation aid grant will be deducted from your real estate tax bill.
That is not technically correct.
So we could maybe phrase that will be processed as a credit adjustment to your tax bill?
It would be credited to you, that's much better, thank you.
Okay, so credit, okay.
Because, yeah, because we're actually writing a check, sort of.
I know, I just like to keep it in hand. If I don't say it out loud to myself.
I got you, I do the same thing, I talk to myself all day.
Notification of committee's decision will be mailed to all applicants by the end of May twenty twenty-five.
Do we want to hold ourselves to that? Because we're kind of banking ours off of when the assessors finishes their approvals or denials.
Do we have a month?
And I think he did say May last meeting.
Yeah, I figured that the Q four tax bill is due May first.
Oh, okay.
So I would basically be processing them with an effective date of May first. So nearly as long as we were to get our applications from the assessors by April first, we would meet once or twice, depending on how much we have to go through sometime in the month of April.
Okay.
And then we would make our decisions, we would issue a letter to me, basically just instructing me to process credits to the following accounts. You know, with input from the town accountant on how she would like the nuts and bolts of that to be structured. So I think.
May should still be good.
Yeah. Because by the end of May, it should give us a full month.
Right, yeah.
I think if you wait any longer, and if you were to send somebody a letter, let's say, June fifteenth or June twentieth, and they have such a. and they have such a short window, especially if they're denied.
Right.
It would be, oh, you're in demand.
Right, right.
Love letter. Town residents are invited to contact the assessor's office for clarification of the guidelines or for any related questions. How to donate to the fund. The elderly and disabled taxation aid fund is made up entirely of citizen donations. Donations are accepted at any time and are tax deductible under section 170(c)(1). Donate online through our Unibank, so that, that one we don't, we don't have, we don't have that yet. I like that idea.
I do too. I think that would definitely help.
That'd be awesome.
More donations and.
I can look into.
It's an easy click of fun.
I can look into Unipay for that. Where checks made out to the Town of Dayton and noted elderly disabled tax fund can be mailed to the town treasurer's office. Yeah, that sounds.
That's where that would go to?
Yep.
Perfect.
So is that okay?
Excellent. So I'm gonna make a note, excuse me, about looking into that. Donate it online.
Oh, speaking of, if we're ready to jump into the next.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna go back for one second.
Yeah.
A couple lines back where we were referring, use the word credit. Will be credited to. Is credit the appropriate word here or is this an abatement of tax?
No, this would be a credit, I believe, because I'm actually going to be, this credit adjustment is within the accounting software. That's actually the mechanism.
Someone else is paying the bill.
That way.
Yeah.
No, really, no.
No, I know what you're saying.
It's not being, it's not like coming off of how much money the town is receiving. It's just the town is receiving it from a different source.
Okay.
So I edited to say the taxation aid grant will be processed as a credit to your real estate tax bill.
Okay.
Is the term.
Yep.
Yeah.
Perfect. Okay.
And which brings us to, I think it's the last item on the agenda for now, which is just to review the fund balance and the recent contributions.
How many money is?
Yeah, we're knocking on the door, $4,000. $3,929. And in, in the month of July, we received $338 in contributions.
Okay, oh, no way. Wow. Hey, that's something.
Yeah, absolutely.
Little bit adds up.
It's, I'd say, you know, the, the account has been established for a long time now and we, you know, we increased our, we received approximately 10% of the total funds balance worth of one.
Right, wow. That's amazing.
Yeah.
That's awesome.
Yeah, wait until we get the word out.
Yeah, absolutely.
We'll get the $105.
Yep.
Very cool.
Pass the hat again, you'll tell a meeting.
Don't laugh.
Yeah. And yeah, we did, we received, I anonymized it, I had the names, but I took one, two, three, four, five, six, eight, seven donors.
Wow.
Yeah.
Just a month. That's nice.
So here's a question though, when the donor sends, when we, you get, the donor donates whatever it is, 25, 50, whatever it is. Are we sending the donor a letter of acknowledgement? Because technically that is a tax deduction.
And it could get them to remind them to.
Remind them that it's a charitable contribution.
Do it the following year, but this gets into, I don't know if you're able to, because this is coming through the treasurer, I know you're also part of the board, but something we like to do too is send letters to remind people like, thank you so much for X, Y, and Z, just to keep, keep it like a knowledgeable thing. Yeah, just to remind them, we're still here if you want to give us some more money.
I'm just thinking about rather than incurring postage and just, you know, staff time and such to drop the letters and mail them.
And it would, definitely.
Perhaps that, as we have.
Standard letter. Thank you for your contribution to support.
Another option, I like that idea.
Yeah.
Another option could be, as we get closer to the actual billing in December, that we could do another update to the insert to remind people this is a tax deductible donation.
Yeah, putting that line on there might help too.
Yeah, well, that's good. But, but having said that, when you, if there's a standard letter, just, you know, without specific dollars or anything, you know, you know, and it's going to Jonathan Gale, thank you for your donation to the such and such fund, you know, this will go a long way to supporting residents in need in our community. You know, for tax purposes, and then you add for tax purposes, your donation was payable to the Town of Dayton. We may even have to put the 04 number or something like that on there.
That, I see your point though, like figuring out where the stamp, stamping postage is gonna come from, what account line. I don't know how that, that might get, I mean, not that we might not receive. I mean, we did get seven in one month, so maybe it will start to get more and more, but then.
Right.
We all know how the tax, I mean, the stamp system's going right now. It's 68 cents now a stamp. So how would that get played out? Where would that come from? If we were to mail it to every single donor? I would love to do that. That would be ideal, but we don't really have a, we're not like a department set up with that.
Maybe the board of selectmen could use $4 of their fund.
Yeah, I, for the time being, it would be very much to figure.
Right.
Four dollars, looking at, no, four bucks.
Could get to be more when we keep advertising it.
Sure.
I love doing that though. I love that idea so much. I just wish we had an account to do it. I don't.
I mean, I'll pay for the stamps. I mean, it's, seriously, what are we looking at? Maybe 20, for lucky 25 stamps a year, I'll pay for it. I don't care. I think it's worth doing.
May I make a dumb suggestion?
You can do it in three minutes.
I can do it in 30 seconds. How about a card? I just feel like a letter is kind of rather impersonal.
Yeah.
But like an actual thank you card.
Right.
You know, that was like a must or something like that.
And you can buy it, we buy them in bulk, pretty cheap on Amazon, and that's what we do. We send cards. It's just nice to get a card.
That is true.
Makes you smile every time.
Handwriting shows that it's like more personal and that you care more and the effort was put in.
That is true.
I get it.
And it could be, I mean.
I would say we should reserve that too for people that fill out on the card. You can put your name and address on the card.
Yeah.
Because I do receive some that are written as anonymous. There's a couple of donors that we write in.
All right.
Or they come in and they don't fill out the card and they, but they filled it out, they stuck $10 cash in it and they give it to us at the window, that, that kind of thing.
Okay.
Okay.
But I do think for, for people that will fill out the card, I think that that would be, that would definitely be something that we.
Maybe revisit and figure out the logistics on how we could get the cards, get this postage and all that. Would you be willing to do it?
Yep.
Do we want to schedule our next?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is gonna stop at 4:59 because there was a scheduled meeting, 4 or 5, so.
Okay, gotcha. So we'll go very, very quickly. How does everybody feel about? Do we want to have another meeting in August or do we want to meet in September?
We should have a reason to meet, so I would go with September.
I say September as well.
We were originally at the second Thursday of the month originally, so how did people feel about, is there a motion for hold our next meeting at 4:00 PM on Thursday, September 12?
So moved. Sorry.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second that.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Public input.
Public input. Hearing none. Is there a motion to adjourn?
A motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
4:59.
Motion to adjourn is a non-discussion.
Oh, thank you very much.
Beautiful.
Now that, now that we are done, is the.